Good morning. I am calling to order the April 26, 2018 business meeting and would ask the county administrator, please take the roll.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning, Commissioners. And I'd like to take a quick second and welcome our young citizens here this morning and let them know that my name's Don Crupp. I'm the Clackamas County Administrator. That means I'm the big cheese here, just so.
No, he's not.
I work for them. We are joined this morning from County Council, Mr. Nate Boderman, and then serving as clerk to the Board is Mary Rathke here this morning. I'll start now with the roll. Commissioner Schrader?
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Here.
Commissioner Savis?
Here.
Chair Bernard?
Here. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Usually, there are five of us. On days we do the Housing Authority, there are six of us. Paul is a volunteer, comes anytime we have a Housing Authority item. Commissioner Fisher and Humbertston are in Washington, DC, and I always call it begging for dollars. Well, first off, we have today is Take Our Daughter and Son to Work Day for 2018, and that's why the audience has some children in it. It might be why Les isn't here either. Before we begin today's business meeting, I want to recognize National Take Our Daughter and Sons to Work Day and especially welcome the young people in our audience this morning. Congress has dedicated the Fourth Thursday in April as Take Our Daughter and Son to Work Day. The public education program connects what children learn at school with the actual working world. Take our daughters and sons to work. Help girls and boys across the nation discover the power and possibilities associated with balancing work and family life. The theme this year is being an agent of positive change. Who out there likes change?
Good.
See, a lot of young people like change, some of the old people. But I bet you Bob might like change. Being part of a workplace team means you are there to support both internal and external customers. By doing the best you can and looking for ways to be an agent of positive change, you help make the workplace more successful. Agents of positive change take advantage of the opportunities that come their way. They work hard to ensure the future is brighter for everyone. I want to thank and recognize our county employees for sharing their day with their daughters and sons and showing that public service can be a rewarding and meaningful career. Would all those children of the county employees here today, please come forward and behind us, and we're going to take a picture.
Up these stairs, you guys. Everyone follow the stairs and go stand up there by the stairs. Hey. Hi, guys. Hello. Hi, little girls. Hi. How are you?
Keep coming.
Keep coming down. Keep coming down. You guys can go.
Keep going, guys.
Keep going.
Does somebody want to sit here?
Does somebody want to sit in my seat? Yeah, that'd be fun. Here, we'll stand behind you.
Get right up at the dais.
Everybody squish in tight.
Oh, my gosh.
Squish in tight.
Let the little ones in there.
Can we see everybody?
Yeah, we got everybody.
Okay, everybody look right here. One, two, three. Yay.
Wait one second, you guys. You guys come up a little closer. Can you just send the little ones in? The little guy right here.
Mary, this one on the end, can we get her to squeeze in tighter?
Yeah, let's tie that.
Oh, it's Clementine. Clementine, scoot in.
All right, tighter, tighter.
Mary will help you.
There you go. And you get up closer here. We couldn't see you.
You got that thing right there. That's major charge.
All right. Let's see if we got everybody.
Do you have everyone's little face?
Yep, we got everybody's little, everybody's face.
Everyone smile. Keep your eyes open.
Eat it, Jessie. Cheese.
Cheese. Okay, one more. Ready? Everybody look right here. Big eyes open. One, two, three. Cheese.
All right. We're good. Thank you.
You guys can sit around, too. Make you walk for a change.
So, Mary, at 1:30, right?
Yes, 1:30 today. We're coming back to... Go ahead, Joe.
At 1:30, we're meeting in this room, and if you guys, kids, would like to ask any questions of the Commissioners who are here today, please come at 1:30.
Okay.
Look forward to that. Well, next up is a gentleman who's spent 30 great years at the county. Were you an appraiser? Yeah, you were an appraiser, and you were appointed in 2007 when Bob, I mean Ray Erland left as the interim assessor and then was elected November 2008. Bob attended University of Wisconsin in Madison where he earned a business and marketing degree and played hockey. After graduating from college, he continued playing hockey professionally, ending his career in the Portland Buckaroos. During his career as an assessor, the office, Bob helped lead the department through the implementation of two constitutional property tax limitations and through a very tough recession. And he's also enjoyed reaching out to the public to help them understand their property tax system. It's actually not theirs, but it's somebody's. Bob has been married to his beautiful wife, Josephine, for 39 years. They have two adult children and five grandsons. All grandsons. Wow. As far as retirement, Bob hopes to enjoy more time with his family. And I saw a sailboat, and I know you like to sail, so I assume you're going to do some more sailing. The county would like to thank Bob for his 30 years of service to the citizens of Clackamas County. And I tell you personally, having attended some community events, that people always treated you respectfully, and you treated them respectfully. And I think it made swallowing their tax bill just that little bit easier. And I'm sure they swallowed some of them. Anyway, Bob, welcome today and give you an opportunity to talk.
Thank you, Chair Bernard, members of the Commission. I really appreciate the opportunity to be here today with you and with who I hope will be future leaders in Clackamas County or in their communities. So it's always nice to see young people finding out what you do at the county and what the county does. It's truly been an amazing honor to serve the citizens of Clackamas County, and I'm going to be forever grateful for the opportunity to have worked with you, this Commission, prior Commissions, because I've been around for a while, our county administrator, Mr. Crupp, and I've seen five county administrators over my years, amazing department heads, and certainly all of the elected officials and representatives of agencies around the state. It's been an amazing time that I've been able and had an opportunity to spend at the county, and it's been a really amazing part of my life. I also want to be, or am especially grateful to my staff at the Department of Assessment and Taxation. They have been amazing people to work with, and I think if you were to ask me one thing outside of the change that I've seen over 30 years, and that is I've learned every day that I've been at the county, and I think our biggest challenge always has been, always will continue to be, helping people to understand all of the things that you do and that our department heads do and that our staffs do in providing services that I think are really important and valued in Clackamas County. And I mean, I want to thank the Commission especially because of your support for our department through my years, and I know your support for other departments in leading and directing activities, because Clackamas County is an amazing place. It's grown tremendously. It continues to grow tremendously, and it's a large and diverse, and it has been certainly for me, an amazing place to live and work. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob. Martha, did you want to say something?
No, I've always enjoyed working with you, Bob, but you're just a wonderful man and how impressive it was with how you explain the whole tax frameworks to people. You certainly helped me over the years understand it, because I've been one of your best clients, right? As I said the other day. So enjoy your retirement, and we'll miss you very, very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Schrader.
Paul? Yeah, well, Paul, I just want to just share with you that I really appreciate your involvement, and you're always really having the answer. And if you didn't have the answer right off the tip of your tongue, you were able to answer my questions within a short amount of time. And also, for whoever happens to replace you, which will be difficult, hard shoes to fill, I hope they're as active as you are in the state and Association of Virgin Counties and everywhere else. I think your presence there in the region, understanding our systems of government and how to represent and what to represent, and the concerns we all have on behalf of the county and the state. I've noticed that, and I just noticed that at some of these conference calls or at the AOC, when something came up and the assessors were involved, that you were a leader in that arena. And I just wanted to just acknowledge you for that and hope that whoever fills your shoes can live up to all that. And I also applaud you for your subject matter expertise in this. It's something that I've always strived to do, is know what I'm talking about, but we have so many different things going on as Commissioners and so many different responsibilities. It's always challenging to be, but I feel as knowledgeable as we should when we make decisions, but I appreciate your expertise in that area. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Savis, and I've really appreciated being able to work with all of you in helping you hopefully to carry out, you know, some of your responsibilities, because I think that that ability to be able to work together is tremendously important.
And I just want to thank you for your parting gift. When I got home on Monday, there was a little flyer on my door that said, "Well, I'm remodeling my home, and please let us know what percentage was done by January 1st." And I, and actually, I said to Bob, "Well, January 1st, I had no roof, so they'd cut half my house off, and it was open to the sky, and it was raining, so do I get a discount?" Anyway, I appreciate, well, that alone's a helpful communication, you know, to know. And the other thing that happened was I sold my business, and personal property tax, I had no idea that I still owed that, because it was gone, but it was after January 1st of 2017, so I had to pay that, too. Thanks, Bob.
Thank you, Chair Bernard. I've always felt that it's really important that everyone knows that our Commissioners are good citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll look forward to seeing you around occasionally. Thank you.
I would too. Thanks.
Do we do a photo?
Photo? Yeah, Bob, how about a photo? We'll come up front. I thought he said the dog.
Oh, no.
See the light?
All right, in tight. All right, and smile, everybody. Three, two, one. Two, one. We're good. Thank you.
We just do one more, just the three Commissioners.
Sure. Three, two, one. All right, thanks.
Well, with that, we will adjourn as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as the Housing Authority Board for the next item. And again, I'd like to introduce Housing Authority Commissioner Paul Reynolds.
Thank you.
And ask the clerk to read the Housing Authority Consent Agenda by title.
Okay, there's two items on the Housing Authority Consent Agenda. Approval to execute the master lease between the Housing Authority of Clackamas County and Clackamas County Social Services for the Jackson Transitional Housing Property, and approval of an intergovernmental agreement between the Housing Authority and Social Services for case management for the Jackson Transitional Housing Program.
Do any Commissioner want to remove an item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
A move to approve the Housing Authority Consent Agenda.
Second?
It's been moved in second that we approve the Housing Authority Consent Agenda. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Paul.
Thank you.
Appreciate your volunteerism.
Thank you.
And now the Board will adjourn as the Housing Authority Board and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners, and we have a couple presentations.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. We do have two presentations this morning. For the first one, I'm going to invite Sarah Holcomb with our Dog Services offices to come up. This is a presentation about the partnerships and rescue organizations we work with here in Clackamas County. So Sarah, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So, hi all. Thank you again for having me. For those of you who don't know, my name is Sarah Holcomb. I'm the volunteer and outreach coordinator for Clackamas County Dog Services. Today, I'm here to speak on a function of our shelter that not many know about, and that's our partnerships with rescue organizations within the community. CCDS partners with local rescue organizations to place dogs that might need a little extra care. Last year, we were able to place 123 dogs with those local rescue organizations and get them adopted into loving homes. Here are some examples that we have, some of my favorites throughout the year. We have Buttercup to the far left, the miniature poodle. She was a high-anxiety dog that just wasn't kennelling well at the shelter and needed to get into a foster home pretty quick, so we sent her off to a rescue, and she was fostered and adopted by her foster home, which often happens. We have King in the middle, who came in with a cast, but you can't see in that photo because his foster home made a homemade waterproof cast for him. That's kind of the neon glowing arm that you see hanging down on him. So he was placed with foster and then adopted out once his cast was removed and he was all healed up. And then on the far right, we have Samson, who was a husky that came in with an eye disease that ultimately led him to need to get his eyes removed, so he needed to be rehabilitated within a home. We sent him to a rescue that was able to provide that for him, and he was adopted out to his new loving home, as you can see there. Rescue organizations are great to work with for our shelter because they provide some things that the shelter just doesn't have, including a foster program, a professional trainer, and additional medical assistance, and homes for dogs to heal once they receive that medical assistance. Today, I'm going to talk about one of my favorite dogs that came to the shelter, because I always get to promote my favorites, and that was Miss Clementine. She was brought to the shelter after being brought to Dove Lewis as a stray by a Good Samaritan, and as you can see, they brought her to Dove Lewis because they were skeptical of her state of health. She had quite a bit of hair missing on her back and very thin. She was transported to Clackamas County Dog Services, and we worked really hard to locate an owner, but nobody came forward to claim her. So we sent her off to the veterinarian, diagnosed her with flea allergy dermatitis, and got her on some meds and some medical attention to work with that. On top of her medical attention that she needed, she also had some behavior issues that weren't so attractive to potential adopters. She had a habit of demand barking. So if anyone's familiar with demand barking, it's when dogs are just barking, 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 until they get what they want, which is not ideal for a new owner to take a dog home with someone who's continually barking. We worked hard on training and medical, but ultimately, she just needed the attention that a foster home or someone with a little more help could give her. So we transferred her to Pixie Project. Clementine now, she was adopted out of Pixie Project fairly quickly. Pixie Project's able to work with potential adopters, let them know about all the behaviors, what to expect, set them up with training, medical assistance, all that kind of good stuff. And Clementine is somewhat of a celebrity now. She was adopted by owners of a restaurant on Mississippi Street in Portland, and you can see her all over their social media and greeting the customers, and it's really great to follow her story. Clem was a successful rescue placement because they were able to find that sweet spot of a loving home that's willing to work on her medical and behavior issues, and we're very thankful for all those partnerships. As some of you may know, the Clackamas Dogs Foundation is a fundamental part of Clackamas County Dog Services, and with their help, they provide assistance to fund the behavior and trainer position at the shelter, which is connected to all of our rescue organizations. Our behavioral and trainer position reaches out to rescues when they identify a dog that has those needs. All donations, the foundation is specifically funded by donations, so with that, I would like to invite you all to Putts for Muts. It is our third annual. It is coming up here on May 17th at Sahalee Golf Course. We are about 60% sold out, so get your tickets soon while they can. Some things I'm excited about this year is we have the search and rescue canine team from Mountain Wave Search and Rescue, so they'll be doing a demonstration on how dogs contribute to search and rescue on the mountain and in the community. And all proceeds from this benefit go towards dogs in our community and helping dogs at our shelter. And lastly, I'll leave you with, I know you guys have a Dog of the Week later, but I'll leave you with Lola, who's been at the shelter for a little over a month and is just waiting for that special someone to come and adopt her and give her the right home. She's a seven-year-old Labrador Retriever. She's an active girl, I can say from personal experience. She's been hanging out in my office, and she loves her tennis ball, and she will entertain herself with it. She'll throw it up in the air and recatch it in her mouth, no problem. So she's an active girl, ready for a home. We're hoping for a successful adoption story, just like the ones I get to bring you guys every once in a while. So thank you for your time. Happy to take questions about our partnerships with rescues, or any questions for our upcoming fundraiser, Putts for Muts.
Any questions?
Yeah, but would like to make a comment.
Please.
I do want to thank you for all you do. I have had to rescue dogs. My older dog, the Labrador, Lydia, passed away recently in September, so now all I have left is Chicken Noodle, who is a 100-pound Labradan, who did manage to knock me off the porch the other day. So I decided she needed a companion, and I found a family that needed to give away a little Pomeranian. Oh, yeah. That's 10 pounds, so I have the 100-pound and the 10-pound. And I live in La Causa, and the second time this has happened, I walk my dogs, and people will come up to me and ask if I'm a dog walker and if I'm available for their service. So I want to thank you. I think I have an external career once I'm not a...
Perfect. Or we're taking volunteers.
I'm not a Commissioner anymore, because evidently, and I say, "Oh, no, I'm your county commissioner." So it always makes me feel, gentlemen, that we cannot get a too exalted view of ourselves, okay? Because in the end, you know, we need to take care of our pets, and I use Barkbusters as my training program, which is really helpful, so I can recommend them to anybody.
Awesome. Thank you.
Commissioner Savis.
Yeah, well, I was just kind of reflecting back on when we got our Labrador, Yellow Lab, and we eventually, we got to put her down. It was a very, very sad day, but I know that when I retire from what I'm doing and I'm around the house more, because we don't have our kids at the house anymore, they've grown up, that, you know, they need companionship as much as we need companionship. And sometimes, you mentioned demand barking, really what they want is just attention, and I know that a lot of dogs sometimes are home all alone, and that's not comfortable for them, but you've got to remember, they do provide companionship to us, but they also need that as well. So I'm looking forward to our next pooch, but I want to make sure that he or she has some companionship at home, when they're home, and not left alone for hours and hours and hours. I know that sometimes we all love dogs, but they have to be at home quietly sometimes, whether we like it or not.
Yeah.
But it's difficult, but just want to point that out, and I appreciate the term "demand barking." That was a different term.
Yeah.
We were calling it, for a while, there incessant barking.
Oh, okay.
But the demand part makes sense, because they need something.
Yeah. They want it now.
Now.
I have two dogs, which we've gotten from the shelter. One had been abused and was a challenge at first, and finally, we decided to get our dog a dog. Totally changed that dog's life, very demanding of the other dog. But I live on a little ranch, so my one dog knows how to open the door and the drawers, so gets out and takes the other dog out for a walk around the backyard. But they also have friends, too, the chickens, which come to the backyard, which I was worried they would do something with, but they get along just fine. And I also have cows, and the cows, they don't particularly care for the cows, but they bark a lot at the cows. But they're great companions, they're a lot of fun, and I'm not really an animal person that much, even though I have dogs, chickens, and cows, but they really enjoy their life, and I enjoy having them around, except for the hair.
Yeah.
That's about the biggest issue, but I appreciate all the work you guys do and the success of the program, and it continues to get better.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the support.
Thanks. Next up, we have another presentation.
Yeah, so I'm going to invite Mr. Mark Sroice up to the dais, representing Housing and Community Development. We have a presentation to recognize April as the fair...
Yeah.
That's about the biggest issue. But I appreciate all the work you guys do and the success of the program, and it continues to get better. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the support.
Thanks. Next up, we have another presentation.
Yeah, so I'm going to invite Mr. Mark Saroy up to the dais, representing Housing and Community Development. We have a presentation to recognize April as the Fair Housing Month in Clackamas County.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Chair Bernard, my name is Mark Saroy. I'm with the Housing and Community Development Division.
Morning, Chair and Commissioners. I'm Alan Lazo. I'm the Executive Director of the Fair Housing Council of Oregon.
Commissioner Bernard, and Commissioners, once again, I'm with the Housing and Community Development Division. The Fair Housing Act was first enacted in 1968. Changes to the affirmatively furthering fair housing rule were finalized by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, on July 8th, 2015. And in 2016, Clackamas County conducted an assessment of fair housing jointly with the Housing Authority of Clackamas County and the Housing and Community Development Division. The community participation process for selecting Clackamas County's fair housing goals included 10 public meetings, three separate surveys. We met with 23 community agencies. A total of 310 people responded to our survey, our community survey, a public housing resident survey, and a Spanish-language survey. And the county held a public hearing on fair housing goals on September 15th. Representatives of the Legal Aid Services of Oregon, representatives of the Fair Housing Council of Oregon, the Housing Authority of Clackamas County Social Services Division, and the Housing and Community Development Division formed a work group, and that work group met to review the data and the survey results. And we developed these goals in priority order. The first goal that we have, our fair housing goal in Clackamas County, is to develop new housing units with long-term affordability for a broad range of low-income individuals with an emphasis on dispersal of affordable housing. So thank all of you for all the work you're doing around affordable housing, working with the Housing Authority, and everything that you do to support getting more affordable housing and housing policy in place. Our second goal is to increase accessibility of affordable housing for persons with disabilities, and particularly single-parent households. Our third goal is to improve access to housing and services for all protected classes. Our fourth goal is to enforce fair housing laws and increase public understanding of fair housing laws. Our fifth goal is to coordinate our fair housing advocacy and enforcement efforts among our regional partners. And our sixth goal is to ensure that all housing in Clackamas County is healthy and habitable. These fair housing goals and the fair housing assessment were approved by the Board on October 13th in 2016, and HUD approved these goals and the fair housing assessment in November of 2018. Now, I'd like to pass it over to Alan Lazo, who's with the Fair Housing Council. And Alan's presentation today is really part of our fourth goal, is to get the word out there about fair housing to the public.
Thanks, Mark. Thank you for having me here this morning, Commissioners, Chair Bernard. So, yeah, as an organization, we do many, many things. But one of the things that we think is really important, especially as we commemorate the 50th anniversary of the Fair Housing Act, is for us to understand the history of why fair housing is important, why we have fair housing laws. And so that's one of the things that we like to talk about as we commemorate this 50th anniversary of the passage of the federal Fair Housing Act. So the federal Fair Housing Act and fair housing laws like it, including state and local civil rights laws, are intended to end the illegal housing discrimination and segregation that was rampant in the middle part of the 20th century. The Fair Housing Act, or the Civil Rights Act of 1968, was part of a suite of civil rights laws, including the 1964 Civil Rights Act, the 1965 Voting Rights Act, and the Fair Housing Act of 1968. The Fair Housing Act, though, at the time, was one of the most difficult pieces of legislation, and it was the most difficult of those civil rights legislations to pass. At that time, mail against the Fair Housing Act ran three to one against passage of the bill. At that time, it was believed that the government should stay out of housing, that housing was a private transaction that government should not be involved in. At that time, again, in the middle part of the 20th century, there was this powerful fear that integrating neighborhoods would bring down the value of properties in neighborhoods. So beginning in the early part of the 19th century, actually, this is the early part of the 20th century, there were a lot of dynamics in place that led to segregation in our communities. Realtors and real estate brokers were involved in steering racial minorities in different communities. Lenders, insurers, and governments conspired to segregate and redline communities in many, many places. And property values weren't based only, as we know, on the bricks and mortars of homes, but also based on how we valued race and ethnicity at those times. And so at that time, one of the dynamics that perpetuated segregation was the use of appraisal lists in a federal manual that listed races by value. At the top were lighter-skinned white races, at the bottom were blacks and negroes. And this was used to direct where it was safe to make loans in a community, the dynamic we know of as redlining. And one of the really powerful examples of how that institutional and systemic practice impacted communities was that same appraisal manual was used by the Federal Housing Administration, who insured loans in communities. So not only they insured loans for developers who were building subdivisions at that time. And so they used that appraisal manual to understand where it was safe to make loans. From 1934 to 1962, the Federal Housing Administration greatly expanded the opportunity for homeownership. You know, prior to the government insuring home loans, you'd have to put down 50% to buy a home, and you'd have a short mortgage of about five years. After the government was able to insure home loans, we have the process now that we're more familiar with. You make a 20% down payment to buy a home, and you have a 30-year mortgage to pay it back. Well, when the Federal Housing Administration made loans in that period from 1934 to 1962, they made $120 billion in loans, but only 2% of those went to communities of color or people of color at that time. So this effectively cut off the opportunity to build equity in homes for those communities, and it continues to create disparities today, excuse me, that we see in wealth accumulation. When we talk about the wealth gap between whites and blacks, whites have about 10 times the accumulated wealth of blacks. That's directly related to the lack of access to homeownership that was created by a policy like the Federal Housing Administrations. So during this time, just prior to the passage of the Act in 1968, and had been debated in Congress for the two years before that, from 1966 to 1967, the Act was stalled in Congress for a couple of years. It finally was passed on April 11th, 1968, a week after the assassination of Dr. Martin Luther King. There were riots in more than 125 cities across the country, and President Lyndon Johnson urged its speedy approval in Congress and the Senate to help quell those riots throughout the country. So the original Fair Housing Act passed in 1968, again, intended to end that rampant discrimination and segregation of that time period. The original Act prohibited discrimination based on race, color, religion, and national origin. Its intent was to address both the private and individual discrimination, as well as the institutionalized segregation that had come into being during that time. It directed governments to play that active role in addressing segregation and to affirmatively further fair housing, the work that Mark and his team are working on here in your county. The Fair Housing Act has continued to expand its protections. There have been two major amendments to it in 1974. Gender, meaning sex, was added at the federal level. In 1988, the major amendment was the Fair Housing Act Amendments of 1988 that brought in familial status, meaning families with kids under the age of 18, as well as disabilities as protected classes. It also brought forward the major enforcement pieces that made that act much more effective in 1988. There have also been state and local protections that were added. Here in Oregon, for instance, we added Source of Income, Section 8, as a source of income protection here in about five, six years ago. And then we also continue to see the evolution of the Fair Housing Act and its enforcement. In 2016, HUD came out with a couple of major guidances on how criminal history is to be used in screening criteria, recognizing the disparate impact on African-American men and Latinos in the criminal justice system. And they also gave guidance on the responsibility for housing providers with regard to resident-on-resident harassment in housing. So just a little bit about us locally as an organization. One of the things that we run is a housing discrimination hotline. It's a statewide, we're a statewide organization, and so we run a hotline that gets about 2,000 calls a year. About 110 of those came to us from Clackamas County last year. We know that housing discrimination doesn't look like it did 50 years ago, so we don't have people calling up and saying, you know, so-and-so said that they wouldn't rent to me because I'm black. Although, in our current climate, we are beginning to see more blatant instances of folks discriminating in housing. But housing discrimination, we know, is vastly underreported. It's said that only one in 10 acts of housing discrimination are ever reported. And about a third of the instances that we work with around housing discrimination are related to disability, followed by race, and then also source of income and national origin, and continue to be areas of discrimination that we see. We have a fairly successful rate of informally resolving cases. You know, a lot of times, if we have a call from somebody who has been discriminated against in housing, we're able to contact the housing provider and work with them informally to let them know that we believe there may have been a violation of the Fair Housing Act and can work those out with them informally, without having to move forward with complaints or cases. So we collaborate with Clackamas County, with Mark and his folks, as well as other service agencies out here that refer fair housing situations to our hotline, and so we're able to assist in that way. We also conduct trainings quite frequently out here. One of the other things we do, you know, I talked about the education and outreach we do that we feel is so important in making sure we can understand the basis for fair housing laws. We have a bus tour that we do of historic housing segregation, discrimination, and displacement in Portland. And we'd love for the county folks, for you folks, to come out on that sometime. We're going to run it, we run it from April to October. In October, we have a tour that we set up for folks that we can invite out. And so we'll get that information out to you and the Commissioners. And I know Mark and his team are interested in setting up a tour for a number of the county workers also. So I just wanted to thank you for having us here this month. It's been a busy, busy fair housing month for us. We've had all kinds of events throughout the state to commemorate the 50th anniversary. Just for folks out there, there's one final event that we have. It's, we're partnered with the Oregon Historical Society, and at the end of the month, on April 30th, up in Portland at the Kennedy School, we have a panel talking about making home and community before and after the Fair Housing Act. So talking about the fight for fair housing back in the mid-part of the 20th century. So it will be a really interesting panel. So thank you so much for your time this morning and for the work that Mark and all of you folks are doing out here in Clackamas County.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Savis.
Well, thank you for sharing, and I think that's what you've touched on today, is something that possibly a lot of people don't really realize, how that's really changed in the 21st century. And we got some books from Peter Moskowitz, the author of How to Kill a City. And the name does not reflect the topic, but when you read the book, it really talks about really the new wave of really, what is really displacement. And whether you're a person of color or white, but primarily low-income people now, as a result of land use or policies and planning or zoning, people are being displaced economically, because of economics. And I do hear from, and I'm really looking forward to actually the event you're speaking to. I've gone to a number of forums and realized how well-versed, how well-educated the African-American community is in particular on this topic. But I apply that to all low-income people, again, regardless of color, the plight that we've got today. And this area, the Portland area, for example, is really, we're really suffering from that. And we have displacement that's induced by population growth. We have, you know, people coming here with money, and the issue of right to stay, right to return. People should have a right to really, I grew up in this neighborhood, I'd like to stay here, but economically, I'm being pushed out. And so these are very real things. It's actually creating a crisis in our state and our region, and in other parts of the country as well. But I think we really need to, I've been trying to draw attention to our land use policies that exacerbate that and don't take into account the people that live, grew up in this particular area. We're finding that a number of homeless people, what I call the newly homeless, not the chronic homeless, tend to stay in the area where they grew up, because that's where the area of comfort. And though they're homeless, and they're living under a bridge or in the bushes or in a tree, they're probably going to stay roughly in the same area they grew up. And it's just, it's a sad situation. But I did, my question to you is, is that, understanding the Fair Housing Act, but do you see any new attention being drawn to this new wave of displacement that might be legislated? Because I think maybe if government's part of the problem, you know, in certain aspects, when it comes to land use policies, that maybe we're not given some guidance from the federal side as to prevent some of those policies that are, again, exacerbating displacement.
Oh, absolutely. I really appreciate those words. You know, one of the things we know is that integrated and inclusive communities are more prosperous. So there's a business case for building our communities that way. Not only a humanitarian and social justice case, but actually a business case for us to create communities that are integrated and inclusive. And I think it is incumbent right now on local and state jurisdictions to take up that mantle. I think the winds are blowing in the other direction at the federal level, you know, right down to the specifics of fair housing. The plan that Mark put together, the Assessment of Fair Housing, if you hadn't read about it, has been delayed, the implementation has been delayed at the federal level. You know, Clackamas County was, you know, was one of the pioneers. They were in the very first round of submitting their Assessment of Fair Housing, and that process has been delayed now. And it was a better process than the previous process. It brought forward a lot more issues around segregation, a lot more opportunities for us to talk about how communities are developing. So I think that state and local jurisdictions need to continue to carry that mantle at this point in time.
Just to clarify, the Clackamas County plan is not delayed. We're moving forward. It's been accepting all that, but the implementation nationwide is what's been kind of delayed, and using those data points of census data.
So one follow-up, I mean, a statement and a question, and that is that what I hear from, again, especially the African-American community, and they're spot on on this. They really studied it really well, a lot of educated, smart people there. But the, when we go, when we develop a certain area and we put in X amount of housing, or affordable housing, you know, whether it's a land trust or however that's really done, and we build maybe 600 or 60 or 100, but I think that is being seen as tokenship, because in reality, sometimes those policies drive out 2, 3, 4, 5,000. People are driven out, and we're one step forward, five or 10 steps backwards, that we really didn't accomplish it. And it looks, some people are being critical, saying it's more tokenship. So my question to you in this regard is, do we think in the urban areas, we're actually making gains, or are we falling farther behind?
It's a good question. You know, we do know that in the urban areas, that communities of color, African-American communities are being pushed out, that we are losing ground, that we are seeing urban cores that are pushing our communities of color out of those areas. And so we need to pay attention to that, because those also tend to be the highest areas of opportunity. And so as we are moving through, working with planners, we need to, we do need to be conscientious of that. And I think we are losing that battle right now. It's a very complex issue, and there are many, many moving parts to economic displacement. But we cannot solve that without knowing this history, knowing how we got here, and being specific about remedying those. So, yeah, I think we are losing the battle right now, but we can't win it without acknowledging that it's taking place and looking around for some very creative solutions, because it is a complex problem that will take multiple solutions. There is no one good solution to, we can't just build our way out of it. We can't just subsidize our way out of it. We can't just, you know, throw economic development dollars at it. It's going to take all of that, by all of us in our region, to solve what is a region-wide problem.
I was really taken aback. I was in Los Angeles, and we spent a day really on this topic in the Los Angeles area. And we heard from the people in the community and in communities of color, and their response back to us, because we're there as a government groups, counties, cities, so forth, and trying to work on this. They say, please just leave us alone. We don't want your help. Everywhere you've gone, you've made it worse. That was the theme coming from them.
Yeah. Yeah. Wouldn't it be wonderful when the day comes that that attitude flips around? Because I think jurisdictions, government does have the power. Because I, I think jurisdictions, government does have the power to do that. I think that we know there's a history where that hasn't happened. But, if we are conscientious as jurisdictions, I think we can do the opposite. We just had an author named Richard Rothstein here. I don't know if you've read his book yet. His book is called The Color of Law: The Forgotten History of How Government Segregated America. It's an entire book about the wrongdoings of government, especially in the mid-part of the 20th century, that created and perpetuated segregation. And so, it becomes these lessons learned in how not to do that and the reasons why a community like that says, no, thank you for your help. This is how we got here. So, I think we can turn that around if we are cognizant of that history, absolutely. Thank you.
Yeah, I had some concerns on the way here this morning. I heard on OPB that the federal government is considering changing the income level that could go towards rent, which could, in some cases, triple the rent in public housing. And I think that when we go, when I go back to Washington DC here in a couple of weeks, might be something we wanna talk about. But, also, my brother lives in the Ahots. And I was surprised to find out that they have no workforce housing. That a lot of the employees who work in the restaurants and stuff are living in their cars up in the forest. And then up at Mount Hood, we have the problem there too. There's no workforce housing. And one of the things that Paul sort of mentioned is that we, using urban renewal, which is a great tool, we've actually created pockets of poverty using urban renewal. And the next time we do this, which we're looking at, with the sale of some of our property, consolidating, we gotta make sure we have mixed-income housing and not recreate the mistakes we made in the past, so. But, I think that we're, we're definitely becoming more aware. It is, our surveys showed that it was a top priority in Clackamas, to residents of Clackamas County, to address homelessness and housing affordability. So, we're definitely gonna be working on that. We also are gonna do a housing needs assessment, which is required by cities, but not by the county. But, we're in a partner with our cities to do that. And I think that's really gonna be valuable information. And finally, we did have an opportunity to tour some of our housing projects just Tuesday. Yeah, Tuesday. And some in Wilsonville, some near Clackamas Town Center. And then, what was the last one we did? Three.
Went across some Providence.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Hillside Manor in Milwaukee, which was built in the 40s, I believe, and.
No, 70s, 70s. Oh, the, the houses were the 40s and then the nine-story.
Yeah, the big skyrise.
Seven, yeah.
Anyway, we're, we're gonna reinvest in those and look at how we can do something different. And I look forward to working with Milwaukee and Oregon City to address that problem. Appreciate you coming, oh, Martha.
Just wanna say, we did actually, Clackamas County, because we were one of the first counties to use the metrics of, you know, furthering, affirmatively furthering fair housing. It's kind of like, how do you say that 10 times fast, right? In any case, we did a presentation at the National Association about what that was like, what the resources we needed, you know, were like, what the, you know, what the metrics were, what the touchpoints were. So, I was proud that our county, we're very lucky that we were one of the first counties kind of chosen to go through this because this is the first time I've heard that it's been stalled nationally, which is not a good thing. I'd also like to mention a project that we worked on in the Overland Park area, which is also a pocket of poverty. We actually used urban renewal because we were dealing with housing that was substandard and in particularly septic systems in an urban area that were failing all over the place. So, we intentionally went in, but we went in with the notion that we did not want to gentrify that area. So, we didn't actually, but we did provide better sewer service, road improvements, housing improvements. But, we used all of those tools in our toolbox, subsidies for people that couldn't afford a sewer hookup, for example. We had a lot of different tools that we used to redevelop an area without gentrification. So, what I say to my colleagues, we already, I think we've actually pioneered a model of how not to gentrify with an urban renewal tool. And really probably need to pull that out as a case study that gets prevent, I think, presented more broadly, not only here in the region, but nationally. Because it was quite intentional. And it was the intention that really made it work. That we weren't just going to improve an area then have people forced out of their homes, so.
It was about retention, about retaining those, retaining those properties and not tearing them down because of blight, but actually bringing them back up and because they were affordable and they are still affordable today.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, thanks for reminding me of that. Because I was mayor of Milwaukee during that time. And, and we had a lot of pushback because they had to annex to the city, which increases the taxes. But, but thanks to the work with Clackamas County and that thoughtfulness, we were able to preserve the community. And, and, and that's true. Thanks for reminding me, that's a good model. It's something we need to do. One of the things we're looking at, you know, we have foreclosed homes due to taxes. Instead of maybe auctioning those off to the highest bidder, we should look at, could we use them? Could we do something better with those, with those units? But, we've learned a lot and I think we've come a long way in the last couple of years in, in the way we're thinking. A next light rail line, for example, which will go to Twolleton, right?
Oh, the, the next one, yeah.
Yeah, we, we really oughta be thinking about buying up land now, rehabbing those and preserving the affordability of some of those areas, which we never really thought about for the Orange Line. But, gentrification, while it has occurred slowly, is in overdrive right now. And, and we need to really take a look at how we can preserve those prices, but.
And we are doing that. We're, so we are working in the southwest quarter right now, very intentionally. And so, it is. I, I think it is, there is a greater heightened awareness and intention around how we do these things. We just need to make sure that all the players agree with that and are, are working in that same way. But, that is happening in the southwest quarter, yeah.
Yeah, one of the things, you know, with metro, looking at a potential housing bond measure, is to make sure that, you know, Clackamas County gets its fair share. And, you know, oftentimes because we're next to Portland, larger population, probably a, a great need. Clackamas County has pockets of poverty and areas of concern where, you know, the, there's an imbalance. And we gotta make sure that Clackamas County gets its share. But, appreciate you coming today and look forward to working with you in the future.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Well, with that, we all, let me see. We have citizen communication and Les is not here. And so, we have got none. So, we're gonna move on to two public hearings.
Yes, Mr. Chair, we do have two public hearings regarding boundary change proposals. I'm going to invite Mr. Ken Martin, our boundary change consultant, up to the dais. The first hearing involves a board order for boundary change proposal number CL 17-014, annexation to Sunrise Water Authority. Mr. Martin?
This is an annexation, and I will remind you, you're sitting as the Board of County Commissioners and not, not a bound, not a separate boundary board. This is an annexation to the Sunrise Water Authority. It's a single property, six acres, but it's just someone has built a house. It happens that they're right next to a water line from the Water Authority. So, they want to annex in order to get service and the service is available from the authority.
Great. So, does any, does anybody have any questions? This is prob, these are some of the easiest things to do. Lighting is next. So, we'll open the public hearing and ask if anyone would like to testify on this matter. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and I'll entertain a motion.
I move we approve the board order for boundary change proposal number CL 17-014, annexation to the Sunrise Water Authority.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. The next item?
Yes, so this is another boundary change proposal. So, the public hearing is for board order for a boundary change proposal number 17-020, annexation to Clackamas County Service District Number One.
So, this is an annexation to CCSD Number One. It's a large piece. It's inside the city of Happy Valley. Happy Valley has already approved a 58-unit PUD for the area and it simply needs to get annexed so that it can get services. All territory within the city of Happy Valley is served by Wes Water Environment Services. Water Environment Services does have a line adjacent that can serve the property and we recommend approval.
Great. Any questions? I'll open the public hearing and ask if anyone would like to testify on this matter? Nobody rushed forward here, so we'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I move we approve the board order for boundary change proposal number CL 17-020, annexation to Clackamas County Service District Number One.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. That we approve the board order for boundary change proposal number CL 17-020, annexation Clackamas County Service District Number One. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you very much. Next item is a consent agenda.
Okay, today's consent agenda, under Health, Housing and Human Services, approval of an amendment to intergovernmental agreement number 154166 with the State of Oregon Department of Human Services Aging and People with Disabilities Division for the provision of the Oregon Money Management Program in Clackamas County, a resolution for approval of a special procurement process for the intoxicated driver program fund contract. Under the Department of Transportation and Development, acceptance of State Farm Insurance Good Neighbor Citizenship Grant to support the Drive to Zero Poster and Coaster Safe Driving Media Contest. Under Finance, we have a resolution approving the submission of the Assessor's CAFSA Grant Application for fiscal year 2018, 2019. Under Elected Officials, approval of previous business meeting minutes. And Technology Services, approval to add additional fiber connection to the intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas Broadband Exchange and the North Clackamas School District. And a approval to add additional fiber connection to the intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas Broadband Exchange and Oregon City School District. And that completes today's consent agenda.
Do any commissioners want to remove or pull an item from the consent agenda? With no one doing that, we'll entertain a motion.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Moved and seconded. That we approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Next is County Administrator's Update.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I've got a couple of items here this morning. Wanted to let you know that recently, Clackamas County Fire District Number One held what it's, calls its Chain of Survival Celebration, which recognizes those involved in the emergency response process that of course helps to save lives, particularly through the use of CPR. The celebration is named as such because the chain of survival involves really very distinctive links, starting with that call to 911, in this case, CCOM. And then, the next links in the chain involve CPR administration and automated external defibrillator, excuse me, and EMT paramedic treatment on the scene and then critical care in an ambulance. And I wanted to let you know that our CCOM 911 folks had four dispatchers who were recognized for the great work that they have done instructing residents on CPR to help save lives. And the staff I'd like to recognize include Carrie Stidham, Justin Myers, Amy Dornfeld, and Ashley Ledbury. And just congratulations to a job well done to all four. And then, we have more accolades for staff with the Department of Transportation and Development. We received an email from Christina, who's a nurse at the Providence Women's Clinic in Milwaukee. And she had high praise for Kelly Stewart, who's a Senior Sustainability Advisor here at Clackamas County. And Christina wrote, "I wanted to let you know about the excellent support we have received from Kelly Stewart. I contacted her recently about setting up recycling in our medical clinic for non-medical items. I was delighted that Kelly was fast, efficient, and responsive to my requests. In under a week, she had us set up with bins, signage, and the knowledge of how to get started. We've seen some wonderful results with our program. Kelly then checked in with the janitorial staff and the end of things is running very seamlessly. We are now talking about rolling out the program to the whole building. And I just wanted to let you know that you have a gem of a staff member. So, I wanted to thank Christina for that very kind note and also wanted to thank Kelly Stewart for demonstration of excellent service to our customers. And of course, service is one of the words in our core values, Clackamas County spirit."
Great, thank you very much. Well, first up, we have Commissioner Savis.
Yeah, well, I always talk about transportation, at least recently. That's not my goal, but that seems to be the hot item. But, I just thought I'd really talk about it, something a little bit different today. And actually somewhat related, and that is recently at a forum, a couple of days ago. It's election season, I guess, and it gets political. And I've always prided myself on being as accurate as I can and, and so forth. And I know when we had before us the climate resolution, I was trying to insert two particular lines. One, identifying the NOAA, the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, particularly because of the testing they do global-wide, temperatures and a number of scientific factors. Because actually that is really the go-to place for what is used frankly for a lot of organizations. And, and it really is loaded with science. The other line that I was asked, advocating for to be inserted in the resolution was a line kinda describing what I've seen in the, in the arena on transportation, which is where I'm going, that there's confusion between what the chemical gas products are and being confused with. And, you know, I have a person, actually, a friend of mine who died from carbon oxide poisoning. It's really, really important that we understand that there's difference between carbon monoxide and carbon dioxide. And, and which one is deadly in, in normal surroundings and which one is actually part of everything that we're made of. But, I was unsuccessful getting those lines in there, but I was actually used actually as a, against me here recently at a forum. And ironic that what I was trying to, again, dive into or make sure that was clarity in the science and being fact-based was actually somehow used politically against me. But, nonetheless, I just want to point people out that both those are very valid. And I think that we need to recognize the facts. And if people want, understand which really what's going on in our, locally, that those are good, great sources. But, when it comes to, and tomorrow morning is the next meeting of the TRIMET Group, and something I asked for right away at one of the earlier meetings was, and actually for, was, you know, with this new money out of House Bill 2017 specifically directed for, towards transit, was the need for looking at either CNG, compressed natural gas buses for fleets, including whatever large fleets government owns, like garbage trucks and some are utility trucks. And also electrification, you know, the electric aspect of that. And it was just, and I've been actually advocating for the CNG side here for about three years, I believe. And some fleets, private fleets, have converted to CNG because they realize, number one, cost savings and, and frankly, lower emissions and more reliability. And when I went down to Los Angeles last year, knowing that electrification of buses and trucks buses and trucks was, you know, maybe a ways out, I learned that actually they, they've already converted and actually found a sweet spot where it's actually beneficial financially at a certain scale. So I, I'm, I'm using that as a model. So tomorrow, that should be on the agenda. I asked for it here a few months ago and that's going to be on the agenda tomorrow. But that's a direct benefit, point, let's see, is a direct benefit maybe to this region as opposed to some of these climate policies that direct or mitigate the benefit to outside the state, but we pay for it. So my, my, my feeling is that if we are in a situation where we're going to participate, if it's done legislatively or however that's done, let's really bring the benefit back directly and not transfer that benefit somewhere else. And I was at a recent transportation forum where people were complaining about diesel exhaust. Well, both CNG and/or electrification is a means to have a direct benefit for us and a cost savings frankly, so hopefully we can advocate for that when we have mandated emission, air quality things put upon us that we actually get a measurable benefit here and not allow some other state or some other part of the country to have that benefit. We should reap those benefits.
Can you convert a diesel reaped to gas?
CNG, absolutely.
I didn't know that. Are you done?
I'm done.
You've got a dog.
Oh, the dog. So I really appreciate our, our earlier conversation and every time I see these dogs, I get tempted when I realize, gosh, I can't, I can't be home to keep them company and the kids aren't home and, because they, they're, they moved on and Suzanne's still working, so we're not, I, I don't want to leave a dog home alone all day. But anyhow, up on the screen, this is Crow.
Oh, cute.
He's approximately 10 weeks old and he is fairly certain that his entire world is one giant jungle gym. He is a puppy and an active one at that. As a German Shepherd, Australian cattle dog mix, he is going to continue to be very active and an intelligent dog as he, as he ages. If you live in an active lifestyle and you want to have a four-legged companion to join you on your adventures, he may be your man. As a puppy, he is still learning. A good puppy training class and basic manners training class would be so fun and really are a must for him. Does he sound like a match for you? If so, come on down and meet him today. And the information's on the screen there and the phone number is 503-655-8628. And Jim, I was thinking about your, having two dogs and you're right, having a companion is great, and this dog might be just the third dog for you.
Thanks, Paul. Commissioner, what's your name?
What's my name?
Schader.
Who am I? I'm a dog walker.
Dog walker.
At least it's like a Swingo.
At least you're not a dog, dog talker.
Dog talker. Yeah, well, I guess since we're on that subject, my little Pomeranian is doing well. People think that these cute little dogs are actually related to Huskies and Malamutes. So they're actually pretty stubborn miniature sled dogs, so they're very cute, they're very active. She is, sometimes could be somewhat of a terrorist, but I am getting her under control. And in fact, gentlemen, this afternoon, I am actually going to be doing some specific work with them to kind of get them trained and promote my dog walking career as well as my commissioner career. Any case, it was a busy week this week. I had an opportunity to meet Catherine Todd from Easter Steels and they are very interested in our veterans project. They offer job training for folks who are trying to transition from houselessness and homelessness, particularly with veterans. They already have projects in Multnomah and I believe Washington County and they're going to be moving into Clackamas, so I hope that they become one of our partners as we move forward with our veterans shelter. I also had an opportunity to tour the Willamette Falls Media Center with Melanie Ashford and we've been talking about this for a while, but I try to visit all the farmers markets throughout the county and get fresh produce from a different market every week, but I also have a little bit of credibility because I'm, you know, my Italian cooking and, you know, having people over for dinners. So we've been talking about doing Cooking with the Commissioner show where we highlight actually fresh produce every week and they asked me would I be interested and I said, you bet I would, so let's wait and see what happens. We may, may have another streaming YouTube of me cooking in the kitchen. And here's to you, Julia Child, for inspiring me, so, so there you go. So more to come on that. Last night I attended Metro, the Metropolitan Policy Advisory Committee IMPAC, which is the land use arm of Metro, and actually we did talk about transportation there as well. And in particular, we talked about the regional transportation safety strategy. The interesting thing is that Clackamas County is way ahead of the region and we have the lowest fatality record of any county in the region because we have a, we've actually implemented, thanks to, to our really great staff, a drive to zero program. And so we like to say we're so happy the region is finally getting on board with the, with the work that Clackamas County has pioneered for safety, so kudos to us for that.
Follow our lead.
There we go. And it actually, I think it's on page 54 of this rather large document where they actually call us out for the good work that we've done. The other pieces, we did review the regional straight freight strategy and as I said, you know, we're trying to integrate land use with transportation, which is Commissioner Savas' bailiwick. I did actually make a comment that we wanted to make sure in this particular strategy in the Clackamas industrial area, as we know, we wanted to make it clear that the Sunrise Quarter is a high priority of ours and we'd like to have that reflected on the regional map. So I basically asked about that and was told that those changes would be made and indeed it would be recognized. So we'll keep an eye on that just to make sure that happens because it's really important. And I don't have to go into detail about how important freight is for our county, for our industrial areas and for moving and distributing goods and services, not only locally and nationally, but internationally as well with the port, Portland. Okay, so I am going to move to the word of the week. Would that be the easy one to do first, Mary? Okay. Faux pas, a social area. Did you know faux pas is French for false step? Librarian noticed the faux pas of the children placing the math book on the U.S. history shelf. So faux pas. Pardon me?
I don't know how to spell that one.
I know. You had to have taken French in high school, I think, you know.
Oliver en français?
Un peu, je parle français un peu. Not a lot, but.
Cool, what's that mean?
Just oui bien.
All right.
Enough, we could go on with this, Jim. Let's do that. Finally, arts and culture in the county, activities in the county. Merrill Hirst University presents the 40th Annual Northwest Handmade Musical Instrument Exhibit. More than 80 artisans from across the Pacific Northwest will gather at Merrill Hirst University to display and play guitars, bow and stringed instruments, mandolins, banjos, yuks, percussion and ancient instruments, and that's going to be Saturday and Sunday, April 28th and 29th, noon to 5, Merrill Hirst. And the Mount Hood Museum prevents Social History Happy Hour, the future of the Zigzag Ranger District. A conversation with U.S. Forest Service Zigzag District Ranger Bill Westbrook. Bill discusses new and ongoing projects, staffing and funding issues and offers a peek into the future of outdoor recreation on Mount Hood. By donation, beer and wine available for purchase Saturday, April 28th, 6:30 to 8:30 at the Mount Hood Museum and Government Camp. And please remember at Lakewood Theater of the Arts that Sister Act is opening up this Friday and keep your eye out on the wonderful plays and work that Clackamas Repertory Theater at our own Clackamas Community College is doing. So any more information, you can go to artsalliance.com.
Great, thank you. And just so you know, and I believe you were on this show, Mary King, did you ever do her cooking show? City Council in Milwaukee?
No, I never did.
Oh, yeah, I did.
Oh, gosh, so we should get together and do it. Is she still doing it?
Oh, I, oh, no, I.
Oh, I'd be.
Sure, she's, she retired a long time ago, but I did probably three or four cooking shows with her.
Well, I'm expecting you guys to come, add your expertise and Paul can do some Greek food and you can.
Just so they're not green.
So they're not green?
I'm just kidding.
We'll do, we'll do our famous baked macaroni and cheese for you, Jim.
Don't eat macaroni and cheese.
Oh, you don't? Okay.
No, so we can't do that.
All right, we'll figure something.
Tortellini.
Tortellini, okay.
I, one thing is, in case you don't know, TRIMET is looking for a board member from Clackamas County, preferably somebody maybe in the business community who's been around a long time. They're looking for some diversity, so if you're interested, you might want to contact TRIMET about that opening. Clackamas County Board would represent Clackamas County. A lot of what I want to talk about was housing, so one thing I did attend was, and I'm sorry, I did not bring my talking points, but Clackamas County Blueprint, which 81 people went through a series of analysis about where basically we should invest our money, and this has to do with equity zones. And we took, I believe, four equity zones where, you know, there's an issue with equity, balance, housing, whatever, and 81 people took various parts of that and did an analysis. And if I had brought that, I would give you more details and I'll try to remember to do that next week, but it was, it was a great presentation. Everybody, fire districts, school districts, ambulance companies, folks in the industry, just a ton of people there. It was a very informative, and I'd love to inform you more, but I can't right now. I again want to thank the employees and the parents for celebrating Take Our Daughters and Sons to Work Day in 2018 and we'll have an opportunity to come back in here and they can ask us some questions. One thing I remember that I'll never forget is Cub Scout troop and I had just done a campaign and I knocked on 12,500 doors and the question was, why didn't you use the So it's really, really funny and I'm sure we'll get something funny out of these kids, but also, you know, Bob Vorman, a great asset to the county, I believe he's still, he lives up in the mountains.
Sandy area.
In the sandy area. Great asset to the county, somebody I really enjoyed working with and look forward to seeing him around the county. And next week, I believe, we'll be discussing his replacement. And he, of course, has a recommendation. It's a well-run organization and one of the things we're going to be looking at in the budget process is newer tools to analyze what's in Clackamas County. It's a big county and staffing, people that go to every single door and do an assessment is a big job, takes years. So with that, thank you for coming today. Les Poole, I hope you're okay. We're adjourned.